Breckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Shaner?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
We're gonna stand for a moment of silence, prayer and a pledge of allegiance. I just remind everyone to think about and, and take a moment of silence for Jessica Lanzini. She was a reporter that covered our chambers and-
Jennifer.
Jennifer, I'm sorry, my bad. Jennifer Lanzini, and she died in a motorcycle accident this week, and she was a great, great person to cover our meetings, and we are gonna miss her. But you remember her family if you would.
And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to interviews now. Civil Service Commission, Phyllis Perez, please come up the microphone, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on that Civil Service Commission.
Okay. I live here now in Sioux City. I was raised in South Sioux, graduated South Sioux High School, moved to Texas, worked for the Fort Worth Police Department 23 years, worked with city, and I'm just wanting to make where I live a better place if I can, to help get things going, keep things straight, and get everybody moving.
Questions?
Welcome back.
Hi.
Yeah.
Yeah, welcome back. Thanks for applying, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
It looks like you got a little experience in that area, so that's good.
Uh, 23 years of it.
Okay.
That's amazing, thank you.
Alright, thank you, we'll let you know.
Thanks, okay, thank you all.
Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, Becky Carlson.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Becky.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for letting me be here. Um, I haven't been in an interview process like this, so I'm gonna start with questions, is that okay? Cause I'm not really sure how to, what you need to know about me.
Well, we'd just like to know what your interest is in applying.
Okay, so the interest that I have in applying for this position and this role would be that, um, I work at Mary Trellia Community House, which we do a lot of work with immigrants and refugees, and although I am not going to say I know what is needed by those communities, but I have the ability to ask them what they need. And I think that is a really important role for this particular, um, this particular committee or, um, commission. And so, that is kind of what I would, I'd like to bring to the table, and that's the interest I have in it.
Yeah, no, Becky, I would, I appreciate you applying, I think you're exactly right. I think you have a lot of great experience, and I'm familiar with the work you do at Mary Trellia, so I thank you for that very much so, and then appreciate you applying as well, cause I think it's gonna be important that, um, all minorities are represented. We're doing the best that we can to make sure of that on this committee, and I think that the population you serve at Mary Trellia needs to have a voice at the table as well, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is he the director up there?
I am.
Okay.
And I'm excited about this, this commission. It's a great honor to be able to even apply to be on it and be a part of that, that change, systematic change that is desperately needed.
Good way where you can make a difference.
Hey.
Really is, yeah, thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Becky, one last thing that I would just say to let you know, I don't know, I know we're going through a lot of applications for this commission.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think regardless whether you make it on or not, um, I think it will be important to collaborate with Mary Trellia, um, with some of their initiatives, or make sure that, like I said, those voices are heard, even if at, at this time you can't be, um, on this commission, I think that that will be important, so I hope you're open to that.
Oh, of course.
Regardless, but, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, we'd be happy to, to partner with any, anyone that would be able to do that with us, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Trisha Ettringer, I can't pronounce it, Ettringer, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hakjanapi, yijikishna, hini karivina, hochak rajada, chakshap, higa inada. Migaidi, uh, rajada, Trisha Ettringer, higa inada. So what I said in my native language, the Hochunk language, um, is, "Good evening, I greet each and every one of you. My name is Eagle that returns, but my English name is Trisha Ettringer. I am enrolled with the Windermere Eagle Tribe of Nebraska, and I have gone back and forth from Waterloo, from where I grew up as an adopted niece, basically, and now I reside here in Sioux City. I graduated from UNI in 2019 with a BA in Psychology, and I plan to further that education one day." Um, I know you guys were talking about student, student debt, I think, earlier, um, so that's something that's very real, um, that I have to live with every day too, as well as, you know, talking about issues like that, and especially as a woman of color. So, um, I'm a single mom, I try to do what I can for my kids. Um, the reason why I'm interested in this, uh, committee is that, um, the indigenous perspective is often left out of the conversation, and, um, I'm here to kind of provide that as an indigenous woman, living in such a unique, uh, population here in the Sioux City area, cause we have, um, you know, 2% of us are natives, or, um, you know, people of color represent this, this city, but we are the highest across, you know, rates such as poverty, homelessness, uh, alcoholism. And, you know, uh, I, I, uh, sit with Rex and our police chief, and we talk about these things and how to address these things, and it's, it's, uh, you know, it's an uphill battle. So, um, I recognize that, and I feel that I would be a highly valuable asset to this community, and I think that the indigenous perspective needs to be included, so that's why, why I applied.
Questions? Thank you for making the application.
Yeah.
We, we appreciate that.
Yeah, I would just say thank you, um, welcome back. I was trying to read on your application, so you left and went off to college, and they were going back and forth, but now you've been back?
Yep, I've, uh, I've dealt with some things too, within the time that I went to college, I was at Standing Rock. Um, I've, I've remained pretty close to the UNI campus and with everybody there. I do, um, help run a, uh, indigenous organization here in Iowa, um, called Great Plains Action Society, and I helped build it, so I'm very proud of it, and it stemmed from the Standing Rock, the Little Creek Camp here in Iowa.
I was gonna say, I saw a lot of your activism and some of the, the work you've done, um, so I appreciate your efforts there as well.
Thank you.
Tell me a little bit about a decolonization workshop.
Yeah, so-
You said that's something that you'd love to see here.
Yeah, so decolonization is the act of, um, you know, just, uh, addressing systems, uh, concepts, ideologies that have stemmed from colonization. Um, natives, we necessarily didn't get the benefits from colonization, so this would be an example of, you know, the public education system and Thanksgiving, you know? We know the story of Thanksgiving, and, um, to us as natives, it's problematic because it's not the accurate story, you know, but we have this story that's in the public education system, and then I have to tell my son, um, you know, the real story of what happened. And so, decolonization would be like decolonizing the syllabus, so addressing things like that. How can we have those uncomfortable conversations, but yet let it be fruitful for everyone? So, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
David Brockhaus, Brock, oh, Brockshus.
Say, Mayor, can I just say that we're, we've got lots of great applications for this Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, but we're still missing NAACP, a member of the NAACP. I thought maybe there was, we had a specific person that was going to apply, no? And then, uh, LGBTQ community, so if anybody knows anybody that would fill those, those, um, positions on this board, encourage them to-
Gotcha, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Now they butchered your name, David, go ahead.
The last, we actually got the, the last pronunciation was correct, so.
Okay.
What is it, sir?
Brockshus.
Brockshus.
Go ahead, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Uh, I'm David Brockshus, I've been working for CNBA Architects for the last seven and a half years, moved to Sioux City, then, seven and a half years ago, obviously. Um, I've been kind of blessed just with the career that I have, as well as the kind of education that I received from that, and wanted to give a little bit of that back, and this is a way to kind of serve the city a little bit, uh, with some of the general knowledge that I've learned from construction practices, construction materials, et cetera. Um, and then, my familiarity not only with the Sioux Cities, um, sign and design code, but other kind of regional cities around here, you can see what everybody else is kind of doing in a similar manner.
Are you an engineer or architect?
Uh, I'm an architectural designer, I'm finishing up my licensure hopefully in February.
Okay, nice.
Thanks for making the application, man, I appreciate it very much. I know we include that stuff in Sioux City Go emails, or talk about it and stuff, but I'm, obviously, I always appreciate seeing more, um, young individuals getting active, and I think you do have a, a great knowledge, especially the work that you've done throughout the region, like you said, everywhere from Spencer down to here.
Full disclosure, I did work on the building that Mr. Waters has his office in.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So I, that's where I send any complaints, right? Like, anything, I just send them straight to him. No, it's a great building, so, thanks, David.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. We'll go to the consent agenda today, those are items three through 11C, consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. You want to speak on an item on the agenda, please come up as I read that item and state your name and record, address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns, I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is the reading of the City Council minutes of November 9th, 2020. Four is a motion approving the Historic Preservation Commission Annual Report. Five is a resolution temporarily closing various streets in downtown area for the Downtown Partners Reverse Holiday Parade. Six is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to FiberCom for a camera at Grandview Park. Seven are a resolution authorizing payment of Vanderpoel Escavating for the Leeds Connector Trail Project. Eight are purchasing, A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Duncan Parking Technology for parking meters. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Vulcan Industries for repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. Bob, I did ask a question, I get an answer on this. This is the second one of these we've done. Now, I, I wanna, I'm not being smart, but I want to make sure we're not getting around the purchasing department by buying one and then, oh, three months later, guy, guess what, we need another one, and that's exactly what this looked like happened here, that, you have an answer for that? Cause it sure looks like you guys knew you had to replace this in the spring, but you waited, bought one, and then bought another one, so you voided the $93,000 purchase.
We had two of them that were worn and needed to be replaced. We didn't want them both to fall into the same fiscal year, cause we didn't have the money, so we put one into one fiscal year, and we waited until the-
Yeah, but that's, that's, I don't care, that's, you're going around the purchasing when you do that, I'm sorry, there's no polite way to tell you that. That's not the way we ought to do business, you should've, you should've been upfront and say, "We're gonna buy another one," and-
Well, the first, the, the first paperwork said that we were gonna buy a second one. It, it was in the-
In the memo, or RCA?
Mm-hmm, the original RCA said that we were gonna do a second one. Two units need to be, be repaired, and the second will be the next fiscal year. It was in the original paperwork.
Well, okay, but... You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not, I don't care what you put in RCA, I'm sorry, I don't care. This was done so you didn't go through the purchasing, so you could pick the supplier, and that, that's not the way we should do business. Did you bid the first one?
Yes, and it went through, uh, with Spiro into the system.
Then, you actually bid it, even though it was under $93,000, cause that's not what your boss said in the memo.
Well, it was the only vendor that could supply the equipment, it's, it's a sole source, it's the only piece of equipment that would fit.
The question's, did you go through purchasing and put it out for purchasing at that point? Or did you just say it's under $93,000? I don't know what you're having, I'm not being smart.
We, we didn't say it was under $93,000, it was, it went through, everything was approved, and, and it was purchased.
Cause you had to go through the one vendor, right? Cause it's only the one-
Yes.
One company that does that, is that right? I'm confused of what you're asking us.
If it's, if you, there's a, you can, they can go single source if it's under $93,000 and keep it within their department. My question is pretty basic, did you go through purchasing and they put it out for bid? That's the question, it, it's either yes or no. And if they didn't, knowing that they had to buy two, even if it's down the road in a different fiscal year, there's a different way to handle that.
And is it even if it's sole source, you still put it out to bid?
You still have to put it out for bid, absolutely.
For clarification on the public bidding process, if it's a public improvement, um, and the estimated cost is projected to be over the threshold of $93,000, then you have to go through the process through council, adopt plans and specs, um, sorry, approve or adopt, you have to schedule a hearing and so forth, um, and meet those requirements. If it's under the $93,000, then it's more of a city policy as far as obtaining quotations.
So because this was split, because one was bought in one year, one bought the next, that avoided that process?
Right.
Rightfully so?
And I think the mayor's point is that if we know that we have equipment that needs to come forward together as a package, you can't circumvent the public bidding process and divide it up, which I don't think that that's what Joe is indicating here, but you can't circumvent, and it's illegal to do that.
I mean, we, we were just trying to spread the costs into two separate years, so it wouldn't hit our budget so hard in one year. There's never any intent to go around any kind of purchasing, I mean.
Well, unfortunately, we see- Fortunately, we've had two of these today, because you're gonna be buying these Duncan parking meters for the next 15 years, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna bid them cause they're, they're basically single source. But they, because they keep their purchases under $93,000, they don't have to come to us with it other than- Well, unless we have the money to buy it all as, at one time, how do we do that? You could still buy the stuff and have different delivery dates, he, he could've, he could've picked his delivery dates on this. That's all I'm saying, it, it's just... There are rea- reasons that the city and, and the state government have rules about purchasing. I don't want to be part of anything that doesn't look like we're doing it the right way, that's my whole point. So, and the way to have done it would've been to either bid them both and borrow the head, it's, it's not like, they don't borrow ahead on their CIPs, they do it all the time, as long as the council approves it, so.
Well, never any intention to go around bidding laws, I'm-
I'm just telling you, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the smell test for somebody if they want to challenge us on that, I don't think, so.
We'll just have to watch it next time, then.
Yeah, I mean.
Thanks, Joe.
All right.
So Mayor, you're saying you would've liked the same thing looked at for the parking meters as well?
Well, you're stuck with them, because you started buying them, and you're not, the software controls the meter, not the meter itself anymore. Once you've bought that, you're locked into that software, that's the problem, you're locked in forever now.
Yeah, it's kind of a long situation, but those meters have lasted 30 years.
Forever, right?
And so, now, rather than bidding out 1,300 and trying to go with a different technology, we're bidding these so that they come in, they can be used as replacement parts, and... But I mean, the mayor's right, if we wanted to go to a whole new system, you'd have to buy 1,300, I mean, you're talking substantial cost, rather than filling these in and going forward. And you don't want to do it piecemeal, you don't want to have a thousand of one style, and then half a block has one style, and half a block has another.
Yeah, I understand that as well, but I don't understand how you would buy, do one purchase request, and knowing that you only have funding, unless you're gonna borrow ahead for the 1,300. I'm not saying that, Pete, all's I'm saying is that, that we should know going in, that, that we're stuck with that. It shouldn't be the second time around. We should've known that we're, this is where we're gonna be, if that's what it is, that's what it is, so. But this other one is, they knew they were gonna do it, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not accusing them of doing anything, I don't think they intentionally did it. But, but that's a case where we don't know what our own purchasing requirements are. Somebody needs to educate them that you can't, you can't do that, knowing you're gonna come right back and buy another one.
Cause then someone could challenge us or something?
Well, yeah, they're saying you're keeping, you're, I mean, Bob could sign five contracts for $24,999 with an engineering firm, but it could be, end up being 100 and a quarter, and there's nothing anybody, but is that the intent, is that the way things should be if you know that person's gonna do the whole engineering contract? And trust me, that's happened around here in the past. I'm not, not with this city manager, but with others that have held that chair, that, that's happened in the past, and I'm just trying to-
Want to stay above reproach.
Avoid that kind of future discussion, so.
Makes sense.
Nine, approved total payments issued for October 2020. Ten are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list and come forward if you have any questions. Eleven, receipt a minute, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Call the, or how we vote today?
Uh, we were not prepared, I thought someone was gonna be gone, so I'll call.
That's fine.
Okay, Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Hearings, twelve is a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property near 1423 Ruby Street, and authorizing a city deed, the petitioners Royce and LaLisa Atkinson. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearings now open, would anybody like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed, call the roll, please.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Thirteen is a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property at 3376 and a half Stone Park Boulevard, and authorizing a city deed, the petitioners Warren Dunkle. I'll move it. Second. The hearing's now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Call the roll.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Fourteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Mid-America Energy for an underground electric easement in the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, would anyone like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed, call the roll.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Fifteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Badgerell Developer for 622 Forest Street, and authorizing the development agreement, minimum assessment, and parking license agreement, deferred from October 19th to November 2nd, 2020. I'll move that. Second. Mayor, I've got a few questions for- Let me just announce, the hearing's now open, go ahead. Oh, thank you. For Marty Doherty, hi Marty.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, we, uh, we've waited a long time for this day, haven't we?
We finally got here, that's right.
We finally got here, and I'm really excited about it, and thanks for your good work, uh, for putting together the development agreement and the minimum assessment agreement. I've got a couple of questions, I just want to clarify for myself, if I may. Sure. Okay, so, the developer is, um, is agreeing to a minimum $20 million of improvements- Right. -that will be made to the building. And then, over a 15-year period, we're looking at $3.5 million in rebate of property taxes on the increment, not on the base- On the increment, that's correct. And not on the base tax amount, but on the improvements- Right, the base is, is gonna be about 750 or so. About 750, 750,000. It's higher right now, but we expect it to be reassessed in January.
Around 750 annually?
No, the, the base, um, tax value, assessed value. The value, 750.
Gotcha.
So, um, with the $3.5 million over the 15-year period, if that, so the minimum assessed value is gonna be, uh, just over $10 million, but that's some- I believe 10.9, I think.
10.9, is that at the end of 2022?
Yeah, that's when the, uh, construction is complete. Yeah, December 31, 2022. They intend to fully renovate the entire building, and that, that's the estimated tax value. Obviously, they spend a lot more than that, but that's, and it could be higher, it could be higher than that. Yeah, that, that'd be as of January 1, 2023. But, but my question is, if we rebate the $3.5 million, uh, inside of the 15-year period, then that's the cap, we're, are we done at $3.5 million? That's correct, and it may, it may not reach 3.5, to, you know, uh, I mean, we rounded it a little bit high, I think, but, but that was sort of the gap, and that's what the, what the, uh, uh, plan is, is meant to, to, uh, do, with 100% for, um, 10 years, and then 75% for the next five years. But what, once, once we, if we did reach 3.5 before that, that would be the cap, that would be the end of any rebates. Okay, but if we get to the fif- at the end of the 15-year period then, and we're not at the 3.5 million, does that- Then they got what they got. It ends at that, at that time. If it was short of that, if it was 3 million or something, 3.2 or whatever it was, then that's all they would get.
It's just up to 3.5.
Right, it's based on that schedule, and, um, and it can't, our, our rebates cannot exceed 3.5. Okay. Does that make sense? Yeah, it does. Then, in the development agreement, we have something about, I think it's in the development agreement, not the amendment to the lease, but we have some language that the city will hold harmless the developer from the master lease that was done for the historic tax credits. Just based on the, the advice you've received from outside legal counsel, would you say that's a low risk, medium risk, or a high risk for the city? Um, very low risk, and, and I'll go through that. Um, we worked with, uh, Nicole and I, worked with, uh, an attorney in Omaha, as you know, from the very beginning, bef- when we were just purchasing the building. Jesse sits with the Baird Home Firm in Omaha, specifically because they have expertise in historic tax credit work like this, which is pretty fairly complex, but they did extensively review that, and so, the risk that you're, that Dan, and you've asked me in the last few days about this too, so, the risk is, um, would be the potential recapture of, of the previously awarded historic tax credits, which were awarded to the previous owner. The bank has those and wants to keep those. Um, and so, if there was, say, an IRS audit or something, what would be the risk to, to have that recaptured? Um, so, to address that, two things. One is, um, we, uh, the, we had the master lease amended to like, I think it's like a 99-year period or something, so the first risk would be, the city as a nonprofit doesn't typically take historic tax credits. So, what that did was, um, essentially treat the bank, the Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust, as the tax owner for the, for that purpose. We're the owner of the building today, but they're the tax owner, so they continue to own those credits. Um, the second thing would be whether some physical action, some action could take place, uh, in the first, in the five-year period, that they have to protect those tax credits. Um, and we have taken no action, we secured the building, and we're not making any improvements to it. So, um, our risk is only for the time that we own it, on that. Once we sell it to the new owner, Clarity, we have no more risk with that. So, really, there's very little risk of, of any type of liability from recapturing, I think Nicole's nodding her head, so if she wants to add anything, but- Okay. Um, I, I talked it over with the attorney a number of times, and this is, um, and I just talked to him again, so, just to be sure about this, to answer your question, Dan, but, um, I really don't think, um, there's little, there's really little or no risk to the city from, from that, um, potential risk of some recapture of the Cedar Rapids Bank-owned tax credits. Now, the new owner, Clarity, will be able to proceed and receive, um, historic tax credits, federal and state, on the new work that they do, and that's a key component of that. So, um, they have little reason anyway to try to do anything to the building that would cause the loss of its historic character, but nevertheless, that would be their issue, not ours. Okay, I appreciate that. And then, included in the package deal is also the, um, parking license agreement? Correct. Is that sufficient number of, uh, spaces that are being, talked about, the 170 to 200 parking spaces? Right, the developers looked at it very carefully. Um, as you know, the Badger Building has no parking lot of its own, it, it sits on the entirety of the property that it owns, so they have, they would be looking to rely on the parking ramps here. And of course, we have two in, in near proximity, the one across the street, Heritage, and then Discovery, which is really only a block or half a block away. So, um, between the two ramps, there's, there's plenty of excess parking that, that they, the tenants and, and clients and so on that come to the building will be able to use, so, um, uh, we will, they do want to see about trying to free up some spaces in Heritage, cause Heritage, as you know, is full, um, but that's sort of a question for another day, I think, sometime over the next year and a half to two years that this is under construction, that's something that we should look at, because, um, there's quite a few extra spaces available in Discovery. Okay, and my last question is, Marty, how realistic is the completion date of December 31, 2022? Um, um, they're very confident, they've already gotten bids, um, they're really kind of ready to go. They want to close before the end of the year on the sale, and, um, I think they're pretty close to getting all their financing in place, so they've been very good to work with. Um, they've done a number of similar projects in Omaha, as Um, they've done a number of similar projects in Omaha, as you know, and in some other towns, so, um, they sound to me like they're ready to go.
Well, there's no doubt that it's gonna be a boost to the downtown Sioux City area, and it's something that, like I said, we've waited patiently and, and we're excited about this day. So again, thank you for all your hard work, and thank you to your team.
I think, I think we did find a good developer for this, and you know, you look at the Warrior, and it's incredible what can happen with some of these historic buildings, and I think we're looking for something similar, maybe not quite on that grand of a scale, but something still very, that will be, we can all be very proud of.
Sure, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just say that I think, um, I'm looking forward to the project, Marty. I think that a lot of work has been put into it, and so I'm really excited about that. Um, I'm really excited about it moving forward. It sounds like it's gonna move forward at a good clip, which I think I'm also looking forward to. I hope that that date of completion is realistic, as Councilmember Moore was alluding to and talking about. I'm also excited about the developer. I've, I've looked at some of their properties in Omaha. I'm familiar with the Blackstone District, so, um, I'm hopeful that a similar product will be attained here in Sioux City. Sometimes I get frustrated when apartment complexes, um, are kinda short on amenities or, you know, different things like that in Sioux City versus where they build in other communities. So I'm hopeful that this one, that will not be the case. Um, the other thing, the only other comment that I wanted to make is, I do hope that this, um, I don't know if incentivizes is the right word, or if it urges the council to start taking action and looking seriously at what we're going to do with, um, the Discovery Ramp and moving forward. I think that you and I have talked about some possibilities, as well as other members of council. I think that we just need to continue looking at the growth that we're experiencing in our downtown. I think it's a positive thing for our community. I think it's gonna increase our tax base and allow us to do a lot of, um, a lot more things in our community, but I think that it's important that we, um, build up these other areas that we need to in order to accommodate that growth. Um, so I'm looking forward to those conversations. I think they'll be difficult conversations, but I think that it's certainly, um, a challenge that we can meet. So, thank you.
It's a good problem to have, right? You want more people trying to use your rent, so that means more people are moving into downtown and, and working and so on.
Now, fully ramps weren't expensive, right, Dave?
Yeah.
No, but thank you.
Yeah, in that regard, to, uh, Councilmember Waters' comments, be sure to include in that conversation downtown partners, as well as our Skywalk and Parking Committee or Board.
Actually, had a meeting today at noon with the.
Excellent.
Or, this morning, uh, in regards to, uh, a lot of the plan, a lot of things happening downtown, talked about the ramps a little bit, to the Skywalks and ramps.
Yeah, it's really exciting to see these kind of projects happen under the pandemic circumstances that we find ourselves in.
Yes.
So, it's a real promising outlook, not only for downtown Sioux City, but for the Suland region as a whole.
I think Alex mentioned the Blackstone area in Omaha. I think they're about to cut the ribbon on the old, old hotel, which is a pretty.
Yeah, the Blackstone, I think is what it's called. I think it's the Blackstone Hotel.
Hey, I'm excited, 'cause I've talked to a lot of contractors, and it looks like they're gonna give the work to local contractors, which is very encouraging, so that's, that's good. Good to see.
Gonna put our downtown apartments up over three hundred when they complete. That's pretty exciting.
Good start.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anyone else? Hearing is closed. Call the roll.
Thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Sixteen is an ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero seven, sewer use to allow discharge permits submitted electronically for the tr, pre-treatment program at the wastewater treatment plant. I'll move first reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? Call the roll.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Seventeen, the ordinance amending chapter four point seven eight, odor control. To correct the previously repealed section number, I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the rule?
No.
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Excuse me. Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Tony Rowe, come on up to the microphone. I've got your, uh, address net. Tell us what you wanna do, my friend.
Hello? How's everybody doing today?
Good.
Good. My name's Tony Rowe, twenty-fourteen Pierce Street, apartment B one. Uh, sole owner of all things Power Wash slash professional services. Uh, haven't really added that title on quite yet, but in the works of that. Um, I work downtown at the, uh, City Skywalk, and so I'm at a kind of a level to see things. And, um, one of the things that kinda caught my attention was just some of the disinfecting. Uh, it's something that my company offers, and, uh, I'd like to give it away to the city, especially downtown. To me, uh, downtown Sioux City is a hub for all of Suland, no matter where you live at around Suland. You will at some time or some point cross through downtown, uh, possibly even stop. So there's a lot of contact for downtown. Uh, not saying that nobody's doing any type of disinfecting. I, I offer it at a commercial level, or Julie, I did it one time at your restaurant, just gave one of the first, uh, obtained the machine, uh, and again, it's just something that, uh, saves the city money, saves the city. Contracting it out, and it's my way of giving back and helping curbing the numbers if possible, especially I'm sure if we go to a shutdown, hopefully we don't, um, some things will be open, and, uh, at the same time, we wanna keep up the disinfecting level as much as possible. One of the, uh, areas that I've seen is the MLK Bus Station. The, uh, bus station has a static electric gun, I believe, that has been purchased, but it's used at the end of the night, not during the course of the day, and I can understand why. But the machine that I have is a mista gun, and the exchange of passengers when they all come downtown to the MLK Station, people get off the buses, and the buses sit about eight to ten minutes before they're dispersed out, and at that time, I've always counted ten buses coming in. I could probably get, I know I can get the buses done within that timeframe. Uh, also offer the disinfecting services inside the bus station. Um, the restrooms for sure, handles, um.
And for those who don't know it, Tony, it's a big, it's almost like a fogging kind of thing, even though it's a mister, super fine, right?
Correct, 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 correct.
Right.
Um, no wiping is necessary.
Right.
With the, uh, the chemical that are used called Quatsad. Um, there's no plants on the bus, so that's outside. Uh, everybody would have to come off the buses. Uh, again, the buses are idle there for eight to ten minutes. Uh, the other spot would be the Skywalk. Um, I do work for a company, RTG, that provides the cleaning services for the Skywalk. Um, again, with the mista gun, I'm capable of running through the Skywalk after the RTG services are done, or early in the morning before the public is pretty much released into the Skywalk. Uh, it's just another disinfectant, another tool, just to keep done, uh, during the course of the day. And also, uh, the library is another one that they're open on appointment only at the ti, at this moment. But again, you know, disinfecting handles, uh, touchpads, uh, keyboards, just things that, uh, ATMs, printers, I do believe that's there. Uh, the chemical will not hurt any of these electronic items. And then the other one is any business downtown, you know, especially restaurants. Um, we can schedule something just to kinda fit in, so the machine wouldn't remain downtown during the course of a day, especially operation of business hours, uh, offices. Anybody that wants a board, I'm willing to hand that service over to them for free, especially if they're located downtown.
I don't know, you're doing it for free?
Yes, sir.
I don't know how you go wrong, but I don't know the, Bob, you gonna?
Yeah, I'll be working to discuss with smart apartment head meetings, and then we'll reach out.
Okay, good.
After we discuss about possible opportunities.
Okay.
Okay. There'll be, sounds like they'll be talking to you tomorrow then.
Works for me then.
All right, thanks.
I would just, the only thing I would ask is just try to make sure to have information on the efficacy of that. You know how effective those products are, or where it's been tested?
Yep, I'll make sure.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be most important, you know? I appreciate your service to the community, you know, and your willingness to do that. Just wanna, we always wanna make sure that we're using products that will be safe, um, and especially when you're dealing with high-traffic areas and stuff like that.
You're presently using that in your own business, right?
Correct, 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 correct.
Okay.
I used it in your business.
All right.
Thank you so much, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else be heard? Pete?
No, sir, thank you.
Julie?
Well, I just wanna say, even though I was not heavily involved with this Badgerell project, I was a citizen at the time that it was approved to buy the building for the seven hundred and fifty thousand, and I did hear some thumbs-down kind of grumbling on Facebook and read a few things. However, I thought it was a great deal, just as a private citizen, to be able to buy this magnificent building for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, as a citizen, seven hundred and fifty thousand sounds like a ton of money. I mean, it, and it's a lot of money, it is. However, in the grand scheme of things, it's not when it comes to a big city budget. So I think that the move to purchase the building, the resale of it, the development, the entire project is magnificent. I think it's wonderful. We're gonna get our tax dollars back out of it. It sounds, oh, we're giving away three hundred and fifty in tax credits, but in reading through this, we're gonna get plenty of money back. Um, and I'd like to take this as an incentive for our council to open up for some more creative ways to open up some housing in Sioux City. Um, maybe try to find some other properties that may be available to take that leap to help the community and to really own these kind of projects. Maybe look further into it to use some properties for some affordable housing, and I'm not saying just all low-income housing, but speckled out within the city, and maybe not necessarily loft-style things, but some properties that have a front porch atmosphere to really build up some of our neighborhoods. So I'm looking forward to our retreats so that we can discuss some of this. So this is just a huge step in the right direction, and I'm really proud of the council and for everyone involved.
Good.
Alex?
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited about it as well, Julia. I'm, I'm hopeful for it, put it that way. I'm always, always hopeful until it's done, right? Um, the other thing I would just say, and I, I know I always get on my soapbox, I just wanna continue to urge our citizens to, um, do everything that they can, um, to remain diligent and making sure that they are trying to take care and protect their neighbors when it comes to the coronavirus. I know I'm nervous about our levels at the hospitals. Um, yeah, it's just, it's incredible balance. There's been a lot of, and, and I know it wasn't Jenny's, you know, with her demise. I, and then I lost someone with brain cancer this week, too. It's, felt like I was surrounded by a lot of death, and it got me thinking about the fact that, you know, over a hundred people have died in our community just in the last however month, you know, since the January. And I just like, that blows my mind, and I, to think that I serve on a council during this period, and I feel like my hands are so tied. I was just telling Bob that, that it's like I've never felt more hamstring, or whatever the saying is. I've never felt just, yeah, just unable to really make a difference, you know? I, I, we talk to reporters, we try to do reporting and make sure and bring awareness campaigns and all of those things, and we try to lead by example, I think, in our city properties, which I really appreciate that. But then to go to some businesses in our community that aren't taking it seriously or don't have staff wearing masks, or see photos of businesses that are packed, um, it's disheartening, because a lot of people are dying, and a lot of people, you know, are gonna have empty seats at their, their dining table this coming Thanksgiving. And that's, it's hard, and so I, I think that people are, and I, I don't, um, discount what businesses, small businesses are going through either, you know, Julie, and restaurants specifically. I think that that's challenging, because you do most of your eating with your mask off, right? And so you have to make those hard decisions, and if you're only serving twenty-five or fifty percent or whatever it is, you're not capturing a hundred percent of the revenue that you might need to keep that business going. And so, gosh, you look at, whether it's mask mandates at the state level, but then it's whatever it is, just getting our community to take it seriously, and then on the back end, having the state be able to fund some of these stimulus packages to be able to get you through. You know what I mean? I mean, that's where it's like, gosh, we don't have the millions of dollars of care funding that the state is getting that could be going to our small businesses. We don't have the authority to do a mask mandate to try to encourage these grocery stores or otherwise to encourage the use of masks, and I just.
But there is nearly twenty million dollars or more sitting at our state level of CARES Act dollars that could be mandated to some of the small businesses if they have to close or have a limited service.
That's just it, I think they're.
That's after they pay twenty-one million for a computer system, but I'll let that go today.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the twenty-one million we're referring to.
And that's where I just get frustrated. It's just like, gosh, you, you feel like you run for, you run for public office to try to make a difference. I think all of us did that, you know what I mean? All of us wanted to get involved, make a difference in our community, and it's like, gosh, to, to feel that you are at the helm of a city of eighty-four, whatever, thousand people, and a hundred people plus died on your watch, and the whole time you're sitting there, I'm doing what, Facebook videos, like encouraging people to wear masks? It's just really tough. So I would just ask, especially as we go into the Thanksgiving season, um, think of those that maybe have lost loved ones that are, that are not gonna have a full table, and think also about those restaurants or those businesses. Especially, I appreciate downtown partners with their downtown marketplace, um, trying to really encourage people to shop local. You know, I mean, look at the taxes, look at the money that stays in our community when you shop local versus, um, maybe just hopping online and having something shipped to your house. Um, that supports jobs in our community, it helps us continue to grow and continue to do projects like the Badgerell Building. So when you're thinking about gifts, when you're thinking about food, um, whether that's restaurants or grocery stores, whatever you're doing, just.
Floris.
Floris, everything, just. You're, you, the decisions you make have a direct impact on those around you, whether it's protecting them with the use of a mask, or whether it's using the dollars to speak about, um, a service that we provide in this community. And so I would urge all of us to think of our friends and our neighbors, um, whether that's through the power of our, our dollar or the use of a mask. um, whether that's through the power of our, our dollar or the use of a mask. And I would thank everyone that is trying to, to make a difference. There are a lot of people in our community that are stepping up to the plate. I look at the city with the, um, window clings, you know, and our, our campaign that we're trying to do as much as possible to incentivize and, um, push, push different companies to, or urging them, um, to encourage mask usage and things like that. So... But no, I thank you for the opportunities to share some of those thoughts, and I don't know, I, I know that it's always troubling losing loved ones, and, and gosh, to have Jenny thinking about her, you know, she was in this chamber a lot and covered a lot of us, so it's just... It's too bad. It's really too bad, so... That's all I have, Mayor.
Dan?
I want to thank everyone in the community that attended, uh, services for the veterans on Veterans Day last uh, Tuesday, November eleventh. Um, the ceremonies were really wonderful and meaningful, and, uh, we must never forget, and that's a good reminder of those that went before us and served our country and, and fought for our freedoms that we enjoy today. So thank you for those that attended. Um, next, I just want to thank Thorpe and Company Jewelers for their hundred and twenty years of, um, retail business in the community. It's a sad day for me, uh, when someone that's my age, um, retires and, and, uh, there's no one, uh, what, Rusty and Karen, they're a fourth generation with the store, and, um, and there's no one that's gonna pick up the pass the baton to, so thank you, Rusty and Karen, for your years of dedication to the city of Sioux City and all that you've, um, contributed to the community, for the betterment of the community. That's all I have, Mayor.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye, sorry.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.